Right hand over your heart, ready, begin. I pledge allegiance
States of America. The which stands under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, Planning Secretary, may we have a roll call, please?
Definitely, Vice Chair Jimenez. Chairperson Arnold?
Here.
Vice Chair Jimenez?
Here.
Commissioner Rounds?
Here.
Commissioner Hernandez?
Here.
Commissioner Carvajal?
Here.
Do you have a full form?
Okay, great, moving on to for ex parte communications. This section is intended to allow all officials the opportunity to reveal any disclosure regarding site visits or ex parte communications about public hearings.
This would be the time for anyone that has made any ex party communications to announce it.
None.
Seeing none? Okay, moving on to public comments. Public comments are now open. Anyone joining us through Zoom can use the raise hand function if you wish to make a public comment on any item on the agenda or not on the agenda. The planning secretary will see if you have raised your hand through the Zoom application. For those that are here to make a public comment in person, you will have an opportunity once the planning secretary announces your name. You will have three minutes to speak. Planning Secretary, do we have any members of the public present that wish to speak today?
Vice Chair, I don't see any raised hands.
Okay, great.
Vice Chair Jimenez?
Yes.
Just want clarification for the ex party communications. That means, just to clarify, that if anyone from the planning commission had any communications with someone from the public, this is the time whether you visited the site for that's a public hearing or you spoke to anyone from the, any resident. So just to be clear, were there any ex party communications by anyone in the planning commission? And if so, please announce them.
Commissioner Carvajal, no.
Commissioner Hernandez, none. Commissioner Rounds, I did, I spoke to Mr. and Mrs. Vitron. They had called me, I've been longtime friends with the mother. They called and I wasn't even aware at that time that this was going to be on the agenda. They called and told me about what was being proposed and what they should do, if anything. I said, you know, I can't discuss the project with you, but you're welcome to attend the planning commission meeting tonight and you're welcome to speak or give any other correspondence to anybody you know.
Okay, great. Commissioner Arnold?
No, I have not had any communications.
Okay, and myself, no, I have not. Thank you. I will now close public comments and move on to the next item. Item number six, minutes. Approval of minutes of the August 9, 2021 Planning Commission meeting. Could I get a motion and a second for approval of the minutes, please?
Commissioner Carvajal, I move.
Commissioner Hernandez, I'll second that.
Great. All in favor, say aye, please.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? So ordered. Item number seven, public hearing. Request for approval of alcohol sales conditional use permit case number 79 to allow an alcohol beverage sale use onsite consumption in association with an existing ramen restaurant operating as Hero Nori Ramen at 10574 Norwalk Boulevard within the M2 heavy manufacturing zone and within the consolidated redevelopment project area. I would like to call upon Code Enforcement Officer Louis Colazo to please present item number seven.
Thank you, commissioners. Commissioners, before we continue, the public's concern on when they can come in to their item and maybe if a general comment can be given on when they can come in, may kind of relax them outside in the lobby. So there's a question.
On item number seven, is that when they could come in? Oh, okay.
I can clarify, there is an item that probably is of concern, which is item number 10. We've not got to that point, but when we do, we will allow the public to come in. But right now, we're on item number seven. Thank you.
Okay, great, thank you.
Great, thanks.
Okay, thank you, commissioners. Commissioners, going back to my item number seven on the agenda, involves a ramen restaurant on Norwalk Boulevard. Let me see if we can get to my slides. Well, it looks like. Loaded these at another computer and they didn't come up. And of course, you want to see pictures of the ramen. Request for approval to allow an alcohol sales use for onsite consumption associated with the ramen restaurant. Again, located at 10574 Norwalk Boulevard. They are a new restaurant, they just started a few, let's say about a year ago, but with COVID, it's hard to remember when they started, when they were allowed to open and continue opening. The applicant leases approximately 24,000 square feet of a 35,400 square development on the southeast corner of Clarkman and Norwalk. Again, they are new use. Several other restaurants have been there before, there was a bar there before, if you recall. The property meets and exceeds the required parking requirements, has onsite traffic circulation and street access with four driveways on Norwalk. The property is zone M2 with industrial uses to the east, south, and west. The properties to the north are part of the village's heritage springs and zone either R1 or R3. Staff finds and determines that because the building's existing, no exterior and because no exterior alterations will be conducted as a result of this request, the matter is therefore category exempt project under section 15301. Before I continue, on the title page on your agenda and on the report, I did a typo and I put 15303 and it should be 15301. So that's a correct number, or that's on your agenda. I'm sorry, on the staff report. Concurrent with this request, the applicant is also pursuing approval from the alcohol license with foreign alcohol license through ABC type 41 for onsite beer and wine. If they are not approved for that license, the applicant has up to one year to make accommodations on how they can get a license. Otherwise, this provision becomes obsolete or goes to revoke. Staff reviewed the location and general area to identify any potential negative impacts. As a result, the proposed alcohol sales use is typical with restaurants serving alcohol and conditions of approval which are attached to your report were drafted to mitigate any potential problems. Notice, we're sent out to property owners within 500 feet of the subject site and the matter was advertised in the way with your daily news in compliance with the city code and state zoning development laws. Staff is making some recommendations which are in your agenda and the staff report. And again, it's to open the public hearing, receive any comments from the public regarding this matter. Find and determine that proposed project is category exempt from CEQA requirements. Recommend that city council review and approve this condition of use permit of case number 79. I can answer any questions if you have any questions from here now.
Thank you, Mr. Colazo. Do any of the commissioners have any questions on this item?
Just one question, though, and I don't know how long it's lasting or if it's still lasting. Where restaurants were able to sell to-go drinks, does that have any effect on this, if it gets approved?
It does, and in the fact, it has an impact because they are allowed to also do service that way. So if you order online or have some of the delivery agencies deliver that food, you're allowed to also add the alcohol beverage to it. And correct me if I'm wrong, Kathia, but I think that's a state mandated law that was passed. So it's unless another state law passes to revoke that one, then restaurants are going to continue to do it even after COVID.
Now, let me ask you, I think you mentioned you said they will deliver the food. At some point, how do they check for ID? I mean, some underage person could order the food and to get the drink.
Yes, you're right, that is the problem that we face today. And you know, the delivery agencies are not required to check for ID. They just deliver the food. So they are not the policing agency, they don't want to be the policing agency. And so the restaurants are just going to have to be doing a good practice and asking for those kind of questions. But you're right, you know, little kid can order some food with alcohol and it'll be delivered that way.
No other questions for?
Okay, great, thank you.
Mr. Colazo, this is the old sandwich establishment.
That is correct, yes, that went away. It turned to a negative type of activities there. We saw loophole and shut them down. And then it stayed closed for a long time with the owner's cooperation. And then he brought in this restaurant, which is a completely different atmosphere and activity. Yes.
Any other questions? Okay, no other questions on this item? I would like to open the public hearing. I would like to call upon the applicant. If they would like to wish to speak, please approach the podium at this time.
I checked the lobby to see if the applicant was in the lobby and he didn't come, so.
Okay. Is there anyone from the audience wishing to speak on this matter?
Vice Chair Jimenez, I did not receive a comment card for this item.
Okay, seeing no one wishing to speak, I would like to close the hearing. Is there a motion or a second for item number seven?
Commissioner Rounds will move.
Commissioner will second.
Okay.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Could I get a roll call, please?
Commissioner Carvajal? Commissioner Hernandez?
Aye.
Commissioner Rounds?
Aye.
Vice Chair Jimenez?
Aye.
Chairperson Arnold?
Aye.
So ordered. Planning Commission Attorney Kathia Furlitt, could you please read the commission's action?
Commission's action on this item shall become effective 14 days after receipt by the applicant of written notice of the commission's action. The applicant and/or any other interested party may file an appeal of the commission's action to the city council. The appeal must be in writing and filed with the city clerk within the previously mentioned 14-day period.
Thank you. Moving on to number eight, public hearing. A request to amend the waste management conditions of approval for the existing metal recycling facility within a 75,500 square foot freestanding industrial building located at 9600 John Street within the M2 heavy manufacturing zone. I would like to call upon Assistant Planner Claudia Jimenez to please present item number eight.
Good evening, planning commissioners, members of the audience, and all staff members. We're having technical problems right now, some. Perfect. So before you tonight is amendment to condition use permit case number 753, item number eight, presented by Claudia Jimenez, Assistant Planner. The location of this business is at 9600 John Street and it's Applicant Alt Alloys LLC. APN number 8168009034. The zoning is heavy manufacturing M2. Little background on Alt Alloys. On March 10, 2014, the planning commission initially approved condition use permit case number 753. A request made by United Alloys and Metals to establish, operate, and maintain a metal recycling facility at 12405 Los Nietos Road. However, the correct business address is 9600 John Street. Therefore, as part of the CUP amendment, staff is also taking the opportunity to clean up the file, change and correct the business address, update the business ownership, and conduct a compliance review for the new established business. As a standard practice for all CUP compliance reviews, an inspection of the subject property is performed by city staff to ensure continued compliance with the conditions of approval prior to bringing it back to the planning commission. Following the initial walkthrough, inspections by city staff on August 5, 2015, United Alloys and Metals was directed to comply with the following: outdoor storage of bins, dumpster and cardboard enclosures, pallet storage and rear yard area. On October 17, 2018, a fire occurred and damaged the roof, leaving the metal recycling facility vacant for a few years. On July 22, 2021, United Alloys and Metals reached out to advise the city of the pending sale of assets to Alt Alloys LLC. And on August 1, 2021, Alt Alloys LLC acquired the business and assumed the responsibility of ensuring compliance with the conditions of approval for CUP 753. And since Alt Alloys LLC acquired the business and assumed responsibilities and several years had elapsed since an inspection of the subject property was performed by city staff on July 26, 2021, to ensure full compliance with the conditions of approval prior to bringing this matter back to the planning commission, a said walkthrough revealed that the metal recycling facility was in full compliance with the existing conditions of approval. In addition to resolving the outstanding violations, staff is amending the waste management conditions of approval. Your request before you today is amend the waste management conditions of approval, correct and change the original approval address from 12405 Los Nietos Road to the correct address of 9600. Update the existing business ownership from United Alloys and to metal, from United Alloys and Metals to Alt Alloys LLC and ensure the existing business is within the compliance with the conditions of approval for CUP 753 and extend the condition use permit for an additional one year on or before September 13, 2022. Amendment to the condition was a small difference. The verbiage is the same, the only difference is the ordinance went from 892 that passed on April 22, 1999, which now has been revised and renewed for ordinance 1003, which passed on August 27, 2009. These are the slide photographs of the inspection that was conducted back in 2016 before you. And before, very far low is the fire damage that occurred on October 7, 2018. The inspection that was conducted back on July 26, 2021 revealed that, the inspection revealed that it was in full compliance. CEQA environmental review. Pursuant to section 15301, class 1, existing facilities, the California Environmental Quality Act CEQA guidelines, state staff determines subjects that categorically exempt, no addition to building or lease area, and use remains unchanged. And if planning commission agrees, staff intends to file an NOE. Public hearing notice, on September 1, 2021, notices were mailed and published in the Widdier News and posted in City Hall and Town Center Hall and the library, and no comments and no inquiries were received as of today. For your consideration, an existing facility, no additional lease area, no additional carriers, will not be detrimental to persons or properties in the surrounding area or the city in general and meets the criteria for the granting of the amendment of condition use permit. Staff recommendations, find and determine that the project is considered to be categorically exempt and approve the amendment of condition use permit case number 753, subject to the conditions of approval within the resolution of 1952021. Approve the extension of condition use permit for an additional one year on or before September 13, 2022 and adopt resolution number 1952021, which incorporates a planning commission findings and actions regarding this matter. And this concludes my presentation before you tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Planner Jimenez. Do any of the commissioners have any questions on this item?
This is Commissioner Arnold. I have a question of the staff. Since this business went out of business back in 2016 or 18, whenever it was, and it's been out of business for over three years, I was under the impression that the CUP, once the business was out of business, would be removed. And since a new business is coming in, even though it's the same type of business, it would require a new CUP. Is that the case or am I mistaken?
That is not the case. The business still existed until 2021. They were just in hiatus because of the fire and they were working with planning to fix the roof that was damaged. So they were still in operation, but not fully to the full extent.
So were they out of compliance with the CUP, their CUP for that entire time?
That is correct.
Is there a reason for that to happen?
After 2016, letters were sent out by police services and also planning staff. And then in 2018, the fire occurred and they had, I believe, from 2018 to 2020, which was last year in December, they were working with planning staff to fix the roof and the damaged building that was there. And so within that timeframe, there was no inspections being conducted.
But they were in operation that entire time?
That is correct, a portion of their building was being in operation.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Arnold. Any other questions? Seeing no other questions, the hearing is now open. I would like to call upon the applicant, if they wish to speak, to please approach the podium at this time.
I believe the applicant is not available. If anything, they might be via Zoom.
We'll wait. No, okay. Is there anyone from the audience wishing to speak on this matter? If so, please approach the podium.
Have a raised hand for Hoy Bochi.
That's him, yes.
That is the applicant.
Okay, great. Please state your name and city of residence for the record and address the planning commission. Please note, there is a three-minute time limit.
Hi, my name is Hoy Bochi. I'm a resident of Long Beach, I'm the director of Alta Alloys. If everyone can hear me all right, I would just didn't know if there was any questions regarding, or if I could clear up anything regarding, I was with United Alloys. That portion of the business was inoperable at the time. It was just a, let's call it a fifth of our business. The new business will be operating without that business segment. And any other questions I can help you with?
Is there any other questions? Okay, no other questions, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you. Seeing no one else is wishing to speak, I would like to close the hearing. Is there a motion and a second for item number eight?
I move that we grant the request for item number eight. Commissioner Rounds will second.
Okay, motion by Commissioner Hernandez and second by Commissioner Rounds. Could I please get a roll call vote, please?
Definitely, Vice Chair Jimenez. Commissioner Carvajal?
Aye.
Commissioner Hernandez?
Aye.
Commissioner Rounds?
Aye.
Vice Chair Jimenez?
Aye.
Chairperson Arnold?
Aye.
Passes 5-0.
So ordered. Attorney, oh, sorry, yes.
The commission's action on this item shall become effective 14 days after receipt by the applicant of written notice of the commission's action. The applicant and/or any other interested party may file an appeal of the commission's action to the city council. The appeal must be in writing and filed with the city clerk within the previously mentioned 14-day period.
Thank you. Item number nine, public hearing. LLA case number 1-2021, a request for approval to consolidate two existing parcels into a single parcel measuring 1.98 acres. And DPA case number 984, a request to approve to allow for the expansion of an existing industrial building by adding 10,545 square feet of new building area. The subject property is located on 12103 Burke Street within the M2 heavy manufacturing zone. I would like to call upon Associate Planner Jimmy Wong to please present item number nine.
Evening, Commissioner. Subject item is lot line adjustment case number 01-2021 and development plan approval case number 984. The subject property is located at 12103 Burke Street. It contained two parcel measuring 1.03 acre and 0.95 acre. The subject property is located on the north side of Burke Street and is currently developed with a 15,733 square foot concrete tilt-up building located in the first parcel. And the second parcel is currently used for parking and storage of equipment. The applicant is proposing to expand the existing industrial building by constructing a 10,545 square feet addition to the southeast portion of the building. There are two entitlements connected with the project. The first one, as I mentioned, is the lot line adjustment, and the second one is development plan approval. So the first entitlement is lot line adjustment case number 01-2021. The proposed outline adjustment will involve the removal of a existing common property line between the two parcel, resulting in one single parcel measuring 1.98 acre. So the first parcel, which labeled number one on the site plan, is measured 1.03 acre. And the second one in the southeast portion, labeled number two, is measuring 0.95 acre. The second entitlement will be a development plan approval case number 984. The applicant is proposing to expand the existing operation or the existing building by 10,545 square feet. The proposed addition was set back a minimum 40 feet from the property line along Burke Street. The applicant is also proposing two 16,000 gallon field tank between the north, north of the property line and the new addition. A new six-foot-high chain link fence with privacy slack will be installed to screen the existing and the proposed tank along the north elevation, north property line. And it's highlighted in orange line on the site plan. Here's the proposed floor plan. The addition will include a cabinet room, a switchgear room, a two-switchgear room, and two generator room. The total square footage with the addition will be resulting in 26,278 square feet. The main entrance to the addition will be along the south elevation and the north elevation. In addition to that, they are accessible interiorly through the existing building. Here's the proposed elevation. The proposed addition will have the same architectural design as existing building and all proposed exterior equipment will be located. and all proposed exterior equipment will be located within the property behind the existing eight-foot-high wall, so it will not be visible along Burke Street. The design of addition will mimic the existing, so you will know, so they will have the same design and same color tone and material use. So here's the parking requirement. The subject property is required to have forty-nine parking stalls, and the proposed development will provide fifty parking stalls, which meet the minimum parking requirement. The existing zone for the subject property is M two heavy manufacturing zone. Property to the north, south, east, and west also are zone M two, and there's no change to the zoning or the general plan destination. Public notice was sent out to five hundred feet radius on September first, two thousand twenty one. It was also posted at Santa Fe Springs City Hall's library and the town center hall. It was published in the Whittier Daily News on September second, two thousand twenty one. As of today, we have not received any comment related to this item. Environmental review. After staff have reviewed the proposed addition, we would like to file a notice of exam per section one five three three two, class thirty-two infill development project. Due to the following condition, the project is consistent with the general plan destination and all the policy within the zoning destination and regulation. The proposed development is a curve within the city limit and is under five acre in size. The project has no value as habitat endangerment or rare or threatened species. Approval of the project will not result in any significant effect related to traffic, noise, air quality, or water quality. The site can be adequately served by all utility and public service. As for consideration, lot line adjustment. The proposed lot line adjustment would not create greater number of parcel than the original, because they're combining two lot into one. The proposed lot line adjustment is consistent with the general plan, zoning, and building ordinance. There will be no change to the general plan. The proposal will remain the same as an industrial use. And the applicant will have, is required to go through plan check, which ensures the proposed addition meet all building code requirement. Consideration for development plan approval. The proposed development is conforming with the purpose of M two zone. The land is appropriate for heavy manufacturing zone. The project involved adding square footage to existing industrial building, and the value of the property will improve as a result of the addition. The new addition is designed to mimic the existing building, so it will be consistent. And the new addition is suitable for the intended data cabinet warehousing use. So staff is recommending that the commissioner, Commissioner find a lot line adjustment zero one dash two thousand twenty one and development plan approval nine eight four are exempt from CEQA. Approve the two entitlements subject to condition stay within the attached resolution and adopt resolution number one nine seven dash two thousand twenty one, which incorporate the planning commission finding action regarding this matter. And that conclude my presentation. The applicant is located in Kansas, so they have not traveled here, but I believe if they are attending, they will be at the Zoom.
Thank you, Mr. Wong. Okay, so do any of the commissioners have any questions on this item?
Well, Mr. Wong. This is, the buildings are, are furthest to the cul-de-sac, right, of Burke?
Yes, that's correct. North, south, the cul-de-sac, I know that.
Any other questions?
No questions.
No question.
Okay, great.
Questions?
Excuse me? Mr. Arnold? No questions, because you're cutting in and out. I'm sorry.
Sorry. I have no questions.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Arnold. Our chairman, Arnold. Okay, so, that being said, the hearing is now open. I would like to call upon the applicant. If they wish to speak, approach the podium at this time. Or on Zoom? Any hands raised?
No, Vice Chair, no hand raised.
Okay. Is there anyone in the audience wishing to speak on this matter?
Vice Chair, there's no hand raised from the audience.
Okay, seeing no one wishing to speak, I would like to close the hearing. And can I get a motion and a second for item number nine?
Commissioner Carbajal, I move.
Commissioner Hernandez will second the motion.
Okay, motion by Commissioner Carbajal and second by Commissioner Hernandez. Could I get a roll call vote, please?
Commissioner Carbajal.
Aye.
Commissioner Hernandez.
Aye.
Commissioner Rounds.
Aye.
Vice Chair Jimenez.
Aye.
Chair Arnold.
Aye.
Passes five zero.
So ordered.
The commission's action on this item shall become effective fourteen days after receipt of the applicant of written notice of the commission's action. The applicant and/or any other interested party may file an appeal of the commission's action to the city council. The appeal must be in writing and filed with the with the city clerk within the previously mentioned fourteen-day period.
Thank you. Item number ten. G P A case number thirty-one, a request to amend the general plan land use designation for an existing parcel from public facilities to multiple family residential and Z C case number one forty, a request to change the zoning of an existing parcel from P F, public facilities, to R three, multiple family residential zone. And T T M number eight three three eight three, a request for approval to subdivide the airspace of an approximately three-acre parcel to sixty-three residential condominium units. And D P A case number nine eight two, a request for development plan approval to allow the construction of a new sixty-three-unit condominium development and up your tenant improvements on the subject property. And M O D case number one three four, a request for a modification of property development standards to allow for a six-and-one-half foot-high wall to encroach into the required front setback area along Florence Avenue. The subject property is located on one one seven three three Florence Avenue within the P F zone Malaya Homes Incorporated. I would like to call upon Associate Planner Jimmy Wong to please present item number ten.
I would like to let the planning commission note and the audience know that staff is recommending that this item be continued to the November eighth, two thousand twenty one, planning commission meeting in order to give staff an opportunity to further address concern raised by the residents, including any type of traffic concerns. Obviously, there's a number of residents here, and I believe they've filled out cards. So, Plating Secretary, if you could could proceed, please. But then for future reference, please be advised that because of COVID, that's why we required everyone to, there's designated spaces where you can sit. So just be cognizant of that in the future. So for the November the eighth meeting, what we would like to do is when your item is called, we will call you from the lobby, and you can come in and give your your presentation. Thank you.
Parliament, Pleno parliamentary procedure. If we are going to continue this, would we do this public comment now, or we would put that on until the November eighth at this point?
We would still allow public comment, but we would not do the presentation at this time.
Yeah, I think it's important. These people all probably took time off, came over here tonight, so. And and I believe you, after you open it, you open the public hearing, and it's important that we do listen to them.
Yes. Hello. Good evening. So the hearing is now open. If there is anyone from the audience wishing to speak on this item, if so, please approach the podium. Teresa?
I did receive a comment card. And I know there's people in attendance, so if people see us, they want to chime in, they'll be able to chime in after everybody is present. Make sure to please raise your hat. The first one to speak on us behalf is Ms. Irma Witron.
And just for the record, even if we've not received your card as yet, if you are in the audience and you would like to comment, you will be given that opportunity also. So just be aware of that.
Okay, also, when you approach the podium, please state your name and city of residence for the record. And please note there's a three-minute time limit.
Good evening, Vice Chair Jimenez and members of the planning commission. My name's Irma Witron, and my husband is Alejandro Witron, and we submitted into the record today, dated September thirteenth, a letter that outlines our grievances, along with factual and legal comments and objections to the initial study recommending mitigate, adopting the mitigated negative declaration and concludes that the I R is required. That is an environmental impact report for this project. Our letter demonstrates an argument, a fair argument, that a significant environmental effect may result from the project with respect to privacy with adjacent residential, single-family residential neighborhoods, a division of land use and planning, traffic impacts, noise, and lack of response, and consideration for public input and lack of transparency. With regard to privacy, the project proposes thirty-foot, thirty-five-foot-tall townhomes towering over single-family residential neighborhoods and residences, residences looking into their bedrooms and bathroom windows. With respect to land use and planning, it is conceded that the project is surrounded by single-family residential homes to the west and additional single-family residential neighborhoods to the north and to the south, in addition to public amenities such as a track, school, and park. The townhome will also be dividing the community by installing a thirty-six-point-five-foot block wall within the required front yard setback, which sends the message that no one should come in and that they are not part of the Santa Fe Springs community. You will also hear from members of the public today with regard to the impacts regarding traffic and noise and are further described in the letter submitted for your consideration. This area of Santa Fe Springs is simply not poised to handle additional traffic and other negative income impacts that would come along with such a project. With regard to public input and transparency, the opposition to this project is overwhelming and well documented, and we have submitted several documents into the public record for the planning commission's consideration. The project relies on the approval of a general plan amendment that is not in the best interest of the Santa Fe Springs residents and is evidenced by over a hundred and eighty petition supporters opposing the proposed general plan amendment and the zone change along with the other entitlements. We have also delivered the petitions documenting, documenting the eight hundred and eighty supporters. And in advance of today's planning commission meeting, and public comments have also been verbalized during the public comment period at the city council meeting of September seventh. The city's general plan expresses the community's goals. The proposed general plan amendment shall not be allowed to bypass and ignore the visions and the priorities of our very own residents, the city of Santa Fe Springs residents, which stand before you today. We ask you to please consider the whole record, including community input. It has been very disappointing as the city of Santa Fe Springs residents to see a staff report that recommends approval and does not give any consideration or describe any comments related to what we presented today within the staff report. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Teresa, anyone else?
Monica.
Good evening. My name is Monica Yala. I'm a resident of Santa Fe Springs. I was also here last week for the meeting, asking for reconsideration of the large project that is proposed. I ask you to, more importantly, think of the traffic. Think of the community that is here already. You are just, by approving it, this large project is going to just put an ugly feeling in our community as far as more traffic. I mean, do any of you drive down that down Florence on a daily basis? Do any of you have to allow for extra time within the last year because traffic has gone so bad to go to school, to go to work, to go anywhere within the community? I ask you, what legacy do you want to leave for our city? Our people that, when our city was founded, it was, our city is such a beautiful city that people thought of parks, thought of making it an all-American city, so many parks for our community to enjoy. But you are planning to leave a gray area over our city. Is that the legacy you want to leave? Twenty, thirty years from now, are they going, are people going to say, wow, this was such a great idea? I'm glad they brought this to the city. I don't think that's the idea that we're going to get. I ask you to please reconsider it, reconsider the scale, reconsider the mark you want to leave for our city. I know a lot of you, you know, or I'm hoping everyone wants the best for our city, not just for the pockets of our city, but for the residents of our city. We are here. We 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 love our city. Look at the people that are here to oppose this. Think of of how it's affecting us that are living here now, not the people that are coming in the future. And also, I know we, you know, need to think of just, you're bringing more people to live in our city. We need more grocery stores. That's what we need in our city. We don't need money in that way. We need more for our city. Thank you.
Thank you. Teresa? Oh.
Marla Velazquez.
Hi, my name is Marla Velazquez, and I've been a resident here in Santa Fe Springs for over thirty years and a resident here on Lake Center Park Lane for twenty-four years. I just wanted to share that, which everybody else has been sharing here about the traffic that we have. My backyard is basically Florence Avenue. And that signal that they just put in on our street to enter our street, we have rigs and buses that go through that light still when it's red. There's times they're skidding on their brakes, and sometimes I'm just waiting for that day for them to come through my wall. You know, there's an overflow of parking also on that street from next door from the park. And then I understand now Amazon's coming into our city. They're right, trying to do something there at Little Lake Park. We're just congested as it is, and my people have stated, trying to get out, to go to work, to go to a market that we have to go outside of our city to go to, first of all. It's just, it's ridiculous, you know? And the other thing I just wanted to share that I feel, I guess we must be doing something, because I belong to our Santa Fe Springs Neighborhood Watch, and I posted that we were, you guys were having a meeting, and for residents to come out. Somehow my message was deleted, and so was I. So I just wanted to share that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ingrid Varela.
Good evening. I'm Ingrid Varela. I'm a fifty-year resident of Santa Fe Springs and twenty-five years on Lake Center Park Lane. I made a few notes, because I want you to know, it takes me ten minutes to cross the train tracks to get into my street now because of the problem with the traffic. We've had one car that's been totaled and another car that was wiped out on the passenger side. It's unsafe. We don't need that many people. I never thought that something like that would be put in next door. I think we could do something better than that. Maybe another housing development like ours? We struggle with parking, but we make it work. I would be willing to accept that, but sixty- I would be willing to accept that, but sixty-three units, it's too many people. Too many. They don't even have a place to park. I think there's like twenty-five parking spaces. Not enough. It's dangerous, dangerous, dangerous right there. That's what I wanted to let you know. Thank you.
Thank you.
Cam Ayala.
Good evening to you all. My name is Karama Yad. I recently bought my house here in the city of Santa Fe Springs located at one zero seven two four Lake Center Park Lane. When I was looking into buying my home, I wanted something in a private community or gated or a house in a cul-de-sac. So it's easy to get to know all of my neighbors and it would be safer to raise my kids there. But with that new Florence project they're trying to build, all of the street privacy will be vanished because I'm certain all of the street parking will be taken and random cars would be driving in and out of a street. On the other hand, my house is the only house with a pool in the cul-de-sac. And right now I have all the privacy I need for me and my family to enjoy the pool. But again, with that new Florence project, all of that privacy will also be gone and God knows who will be looking down from their third floor on my family and kids in the pool. I think it would be better for me and my neighbors if you built some sort of a shopping center instead, so we can go shopping for groceries and et cetera. And that way we can be spending our money in our community rather than having to drive out of the city and taking our money to other surrounding cities like Norwalk, Whittier and Downey. Thank you very much and please consider our concerns.
Hello, my name is Irma Hernandez and I'm a resident here of Santa Fe Springs for the last eight years on Flalun Avenue, right off of Ringwood and Florence. The reason for my visit today is obviously not only to express my own grievances, but those of my neighbors in the surrounding neighborhood. In the last few days, I've had a chance and opportunity to speak to several of them as we canvass the area. And we came to the same consensus where like many, I'll echo some of the things, you know, the congestion is definitely of grave concern. Primarily, you know, as we exit the Ringwood Avenue towards this stoplight, we try to exit, but you'll see that the cars are congested and sometimes they block the traffic. So when people are trying to cross, especially our children in the nearby schools and you see we have, you know, the schools even at Lake Center Park Lane, they cut across through the park and they come through on Flalun Avenue. I recently went to go take a look and I wanted to see what the experience was like for the children. I nearly was hit by another neighbor. And I don't think it was on purpose. It was just that there's so many big rigs. There's Amazon coming on in a few weeks or months. We have the train track that's right within a couple hundred feet of the townhome, proposed townhome project. And it's, it's something that you don't feel until you're standing there or driving that specific intersection. And if you look at the traffic coming from Florence to all the way to Studio Baker, you have to think about how it funnels the traffic, the thousands of cars and big rigs, commercial vehicles. They come in through, come through Florence and it's on three lanes, right? And we're going forward all the way through the Florence Bridge. Before that, you have the five freeway entrance. Right after that, you have another five freeway entrance. You make a left on Studio Baker, you have two more. You know, the five and the six oh five, you cross over under the bridge and you'll have also the six oh five freeway there. And then also the congestion, kind of like my other neighbor said, is that everybody's going out of town. So we're all leaving the area. Either, I mean, we just, people work there. If you don't, if you don't live there, if you're not a couple, you know, thousand residents that live there, you're working there and you're leaving. And that's where everybody's going and that's causing a lot of congestion. On top of that, we have the HOV lanes that are going to be, going to be opening up in the next couple of, of months. So it's going to cause more traffic. It's the best entrance and exit out of the city. It is very, very congested. It's extremely busy and I ask you to consider, not only that, the noise, the pollution, the lack of inclusivity of the neighbors with the, you know, new complex. It has a six and a half foot wall and it lacks everything but a moat. It has gates. It's huge. It's three stories tall and it's invasion of people's privacy. I ask that you really consider what is happening here in our neighborhood. It is not, it's just not just about the project. It's about the investment that people have made to make their homes private. It's their pet enjoy. It's everything for them and it's really important that you not only consider our neighbors, but you consider the precedents that you make for the, the community. If you build it now here, which you did on, you know, on the Alberta's, it's going to continue to happen to other people. I, it personally doesn't impact me right then and now, but in a few months it will. If all these cars come, you know, we're going to have people parking and I'm not going to know any of them. Thank you.
Thank you.
Alejandro Vitron.
Good evening, Vice Chairman Jimenez and fellow commissioners. Thank you for the time you've given us here to present our concerns about this project. My name is Alejandro Vitron. I've been a resident of the city of Santa Fe Springs for approximately forty years. I'm one of the original owners of the development of Lake Center Park Lane and, which is a beautiful, close-knit community that we are in danger of losing here. As you have heard from many of our fellow residents, there's grave concern about this project. And what baffles me in particular, not knowing politics about cities and so on, is how our planning department can proceed to the point where they're actually recommending a project of this scope to the commission and to city council, not taking into consideration the concern of all of us residents. My wife and I, about two weeks ago, we contacted the director of planning and met with him to voice our concern. It was only three of us. We went over all of the issues that we are presenting here to you. Unfortunately, it fell on deaf ears. We ended the meeting with absolutely no recommendations as to how they could mitigate the problems. We didn't feel that we were heard. Rather, they ended the meetings telling us that they were going to proceed with the project and do the recommendation to your board and to city council. It is baffling to me that the planning department can do all of these steps without even the city council knowing about the project. Because as we communicated with city council, we found out that many of them, or all of them, didn't know anything about the project. Now again, I don't know city politics, but it's unbelievable that we have a process like that. We depend on you. We are asking you to not only deny this project, but to even if possible, vote on it tonight. Because I'm not sure what it is that our planning department is thinking that they're going to do in two months to make this right. If you vote on it tonight, you turn it down and then we can go a different way. We, again, we don't want to stop development. We encourage a new home tract like ours or shopping, as has been recommended, but certainly not what is being proposed. And you can see all of the, all of the issues. If I may, quickly, we contacted the fire, the police department and asked for information regarding the accidents that have taken place on Florence between Oranay and Norwalk. To give you an idea, to the S of today, year to date, we have reported, they have reported thirty-four accidents between Oranay and Norwalk compared to twenty-nine last year and thirty-six the year before. Personal injury collisions, eighteen year to date, fourteen last year, fourteen the year before. Fatalities, there's been one fatality, one last year. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir.
Vice Chair, I have Sergio Ramirez.
Hello, Sergio.
Hello, thank you so much. So yes, I had actually purchased the home for my mother who lives on Flalun and a few, about, well, it's about ten years ago and we were very excited. She was finally able to move in and it's, it's kind of unfortunate to see these projects continue to develop. I mean, I've, I've had the fortunate ability to live in various communities. I've lived in Anaheim by the Packing House. I lived in a community south of, a little closer to Disneyland. Now I live in one over in Whittier. And I see these developments and I see how much of an impact they have on the, the density of the community and every single time in all these amounts, which the, the two previously, we've actually moved out of because there was zero parking. And, you know, I, I think it's important to understand when we look at these developments, that it's not just what is, what, how many parking spots have been approved, but really understand the habits and, you know, I guess just daily activity of, of humans and know that if you have a, if you have a building with a garage, most likely people are going to fill that garage. And when we see that, that means that the parking then gets overflowing on over to the streets. And it's, it's almost unfortunate that that understanding of people's, just, you know, general nature gets forgotten when we look at these projects and all we do is we just look at numbers without really understanding the actual impact. And I think that's what we're hearing today from many of the residents because they've all expressed that while it may meet code, the reality is, is that the true impact is, is felt immediately by those living in the neighborhood and, and long-term. And we also understand that the types of residents who live in this neighborhood are typically young families with young children, but you know, if we look at social behavior, again, we see that those families get older, but they also don't leave. So we also see that those older children start to buy their own cars and live in the community, which we can see based on the traffic and the density in the areas where I grew up, you know, in, in the city. And I can see that the neighborhoods that were lightly congested are heavily congested now, in part because a lot of the children still live at home. So I think when we look at the long-term impacts, that's really something to also consider as opposed to just seeing if we're checking off a few boxes to meet code requirements. That's all I have to offer. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak?
Vice Chair, have no one else be assumed.
Is there anyone in the audience wishing to speak? Could you please state your name and residence for the record, please?
My name is Lucia Nahara. I live here in Santa Fe Springs. The reason I came to this meeting is it caught my attention by some of my neighbors. And a few months ago, I attended a, a planning Zoom meeting with regards to environmental impact. And one of the words that I kind of was wondering about that they termed was something called environmental justice. I'm like, what the heck is that? Well, it, I think that has to do with the quality of life and in the city with the, this big, huge building, there's going to be a lot of congestion. And so I'm wondering, I thought to myself, would any of you, would you like to move next to this monstrosity that is going to be built? And I feel that the tax base that the city's going to get from there is not, it's not going to be enough. And with some, the gentleman before, I have the kids in college. I can't wait till they move out so I can have my own parking. But with homes and prices, I don't see that them, you know, maybe ten years, they save their money. But we have a lot of people with, where are you going to park? Even down the street from where I live, somebody built an ADU. To go down the street, you have to move over. There's no parking. And so therefore that causes a quality of life situation. So I just wanted to speak on behalf of a lot of the neighbors and to you. Would you want to move net there, next door? With the planner, director would like to move there as well. It's, it's, there's children, they're crossing the street. It's horrible. So please reconsider and like the gentleman here said, please decline this, this request. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the audience wishing to speak on this matter? Yes, please state your name and residence for the record.
Hello, my name is Dulce Cisneros and my husband and I have been residents of Santa Fe Springs for about five years now. I love the city, the community and our neighborhood. Ever since a new traffic stoplight has been installed on Florence Avenue, I have witnessed more vehicle collisions, three of which my neighbors unfortunately have experienced an extremely high traffic congestion. Every time before I leave to work or head out about my day on the weekends, I have to wait at least five seconds on my street before heading on to Florence Avenue. Without fail, there is always a car or a big rig that takes a red light when going west or eastbound on Florence Avenue. The street is the busiest street in our city due to the freeway access aside from Telegraph Road. We don't need an additional a hundred vehicles added to the daily traffic of which we already have. Lastly, I would like to add that my husband, who is an LA sheriff for LA County, chose his home and the community for myself and for our future family. Ever since we've gotten the notice of this project, we're reconsidering like our staying here long-term and we're considering moving. And I would hate to leave the city, the street that we live on because our neighbors are such great people. I wouldn't want to do that. So therefore I strongly oppose the development of this residential plan. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Is there anyone else wishing to speak? Please state your name and address for the record.
Hi, I'm Kathy Reed and I'm a resident of Santa Fe Springs. I live in the triangle across from the development you're considering. And there just is not enough parking. We already have the Santa Fe apartments parking on all of our streets, on the Florence Alternative, on Ringwood, on Flalun and even onto Jersey now, which is where I live. We see them park and then walk to the apartments. If you put a sixty-two unit or sixty-three unit development that doesn't have enough parking, they're going to spill out into our neighborhood and then have to cross the street. So it, it's just too big, too tall, too many people and Florence is congested as it is. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes. Please state your name and address.
Hello, my name is Mara Ciqueros Bucanda and I live in the ranches of Santa Fe condominiums that are like right next to it. I'm terrified by this project. I can't believe the number of units that they are trying to put in it. Every time I drive through it, I'm like, this is such a small lot. Like, how are they thinking to do this? I used to live in West Hollywood for almost ten years. And the reason, the main reason why I came here, I got married, but we wanted to live in a very friendly and peaceful community. I will hate to see this transform into what West Hollywood is. All the small houses that used to be around my, my house, they're gone because they started building this crazy complex. So I love Santa Fe Springs. I love coming out and run and see houses. I'm from Mexico City and I love how green here it is. Only small houses, the parks, the schools. That intersection on Pioneer and Florence is already dangerous as it is. The trains sometimes also get stuck and you have to wait another ten minutes, twenty minutes. And I can only imagine if that happens while they're under construction. So this is really, really terrifying for me for so many reasons. Safety, pollution, traffic, noise. And I will hate to see Santa Fe Springs become like downtown LA or West Hollywood. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else wishing to speak on this matter? Okay, I would like to say something. I'm just glad that you guys all came out tonight to speak your voice and state your concerns. All, all us commissioners are Santa Fe residents, also Santa Fe Springs residents, so we do take into consideration your concerns. And I just want to thank you all for coming out tonight and sharing your thoughts.
Yeah, I'd also like to express my appreciation for everyone coming out. I've lived in Santa Fe Springs for seventy years, so I've seen a lot of it. I've seen everything built up, really. You know, this is what the city's all about. Um, you know, this is what the city is all about, is our residents being concerned about your city, our city. We have our families here, our our children, our grandchildren, a lot of us live here too, so, you know. Um, not sure if a decision will be made tonight. I can't promise you any, none of us can promise you that. But you are being heard. It's your right. And um, you know, again, just thank you for for being here for your city. Thank you.
Yes, is there anyone else who would like to speak up here?
Um, again, I'd like to thank everybody for coming out. We all here and take into consideration just how. This is affecting you or or will affect you if it goes through. Um, for myself, I was raised on the north side. My house is right by the drain drought. So I know what you're going through, having huge sound barrier walls and having to deal with. Um, many businesses coming through, coming down Arley, when you have actually semi trucks trying to make a turn on there. So we do feel for you. We we know and understand. I also invite you, our city is going through general planning. And we are actively seeking residents to join in on these meetings with us. That tells us how much we need per state mandated homes that have to be built. Within uh 10 years, but that's every city. What can we do? Where can we find it? Multi-functional? And it would be so great to hear all of this in that as well. And um, I really recommend you do that. We have them on Zoom and um. Whatever what happens, I'm glad that everybody came out and is letting us hear your side.
Hernandez?
Uh, yes. Oh, go ahead, Mr. Hernandez. Go ahead.
For years, like I grew up here, I worked here, I live here. Um, there's even somebody in the audience that I worked with that at one point too. Um, if you know Santa Fe Springs, you long time, long time residents know it's very generational. And people are close with each other. This is a growing problem, not just here in Santa Fe Springs, but other communities. Okay? If this project doesn't go up, something else is going to go up there. And there's going to be traffic and there's going to be other issues too. But I understand what you're saying, because I face the same challenges too every day. Taking grandkids to school and just trying to get out of the street to.
Commissioner, I'm sorry to interject. I just want to make sure that we limit um comments um with not not giving any indication as to how we'll be deciding. So I apologize. You can go on.
Anyway, so what I'm saying is there's got to be a lot of considerations and just like my colleagues here, we're glad you came out. You need to be voiced and stuff. Um, and hopefully we'll reach something that's a a good decision for everybody and that um. Well, we'll see what happens. Okay, but thank you for coming out.
Chairman Arnold?
Yeah, this is uh, this is Ken Arnold. I uh, I have missed the last couple of Planning Commission meetings. Because of a health issue, I wanted to be sure to attend this meeting. Because it's very important to me that we uh get the community involved and I like to re- reiterate. Wha- what uh Ms. Carvahal has uh said that we're in the process now of redoing our general plan. And um, any of you that would would uh like to come in and join in and help us uh design the city. I've lived here since 1974 and I was involved in 1992 with the general plan revision that we did then. And uh, working on it again uh as we go forward. Uh, unfortunately with my illness, I'm not not able to. Be there in person, but I I just want to let you know that all the people that are on the planning commission. Are very concerned with our community and uh I I live on Hollyhock Street. Uh, at the end of Hollyhock Street and we have Aspen Meadows, which is a condominium project. Uh, that's just be uh behind this CHP office and Cherry's Donuts uh that borders our street. And uh, I I understand uh how the community is concerned. About uh adding condominium projects into the city, but um. Uh, I just want to thank you for showing up and thank you for your concern. And thank you for your cooperation as we go forward this with this project. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Arnold. Seeing no other, seeing no one else wishing to speak, could I get a motion in a second to continue this public hearing? On November 8th, 2021?
Mr. Hernandez, I motion to have a continuance.
This is Chair Arnold. I'll second that motion.
Okay, so I have a motion by Commissioner Hernandez and a second by Chair Arnold. Planning Secretary, could I get a roll call vote, please?
Definitely, Vice Chair. Commissioner Carvahal? Commissioner Hernandez?
Aye.
Commissioner Rounds?
No.
Vice Chair Jimenez?
Aye.
Chairperson Arnold?
Aye.
Passes 4-1.
So ordered. Okay, moving on to item number 11. A request for a modification of property development standards to temporarily not provide four required parking stalls and instead temporarily. Use said area for loading and unloading of products located at 13253 Alondra Boulevard. Within the M2 heavy manufacturing zone. I would like to call upon Associate Planner Vince Velasco to please present item number 11.
Good evening, planning commissioners.
Good evening.
I'm uh here tonight to present modification permit case number 1341. Uh, if you recall, this item was previously noticed for the August 9th Planning Commission meeting. Uh, however, there was a change to some of the information, so we decided to remove that item from the August meeting. Uh, we decided to renotice with the with the updated information and that's what brings us here tonight. So the subject property is located at 13253 Alondra Avenue, Alondra Boulevard, my apologies. The general plan land use designation is industrial, the zoning designation is M2 heavy manufacturing. And the applicant is Spectrum Alondra Property LLC. The subject property is occupied by Spectrum Hydroponics and they are a distributor of hydroponics equipment. The property is also developed with a 10,138 square foot industrial building. With 1,180 square feet of office area. Since there is only 12% of office area, there is no additional parking required per code. The request before you tonight is to temporarily not provide it for required parking stalls in association with loading and unloading activities. Per code, uh, the subject property is required to provide 20 parking stalls. Based on a previously approved plan, they are currently providing 20 parking stalls. However, the request again. Is to reduce the number of parking spaces by four and therefore provide a total of 16 parking stalls. 14 standard parking stalls, one compact stall and one ADA parking stall. Again, this is the previously approved parking plan from 1965. As you can see, the building uh was approved. To provide 20 required parking spaces as per code and they do have two existing driveways for ingress and egress. The proposed uh site plan again will show 14 standard parking stalls, one. Proposed compact stall towards the north. One ADA stall that is required per building code. And they are proposing to relocate one of the driveways towards the north of the property. And finally, they are proposing to add a new fence uh for the proposed loading area towards the north and back of the building. To help alleviate some of the concerns, the applicant has provided an alternative parking plan, which again shows how the subject property can meet. The 20 required parking spaces. Therefore, if parking were to become an issue in the future. The applicant is proposing to strip the four required parking spaces spaces in the loading area similar to the previously approved site plan. And this is just showing the zoning regulations for the parking requirements. Pursuant to class five of CEQA, staff has determined the subject property is categorically exempt. As there are minor exterior changes to the parking layout, no additional square footage being proposed and the use will remain the same. If the planning commission agrees, staff intends to file a notice of exemption. With all new business items, staff has noticed the adjacent properties. There were a four adjacent properties that were noticed. Uh, the original notice was sent out on July 30th. With the renotice sent out on September 1st. The notice was also posted in City Hall, Town Center Hall kiosk and the city's library and no comments or inquiries have been received to date. Through consideration, the zoning ordinance calculates parking based on the uses provided for each respective parcel. And does not consider the actual demand of the operating business. The request is for a temporary removal based on the applicant's current situation. They currently have four to five employees and thus will uh leave 11 to 12 parking stalls for additional employees in the future. And or customers they may have. Also, the proposed loading activities will be screened from the public street. As fencing will be submitted to planning, building and fire for their review should the commission grant the proposed request. Should a need arise, as previously mentioned, uh, the applicant has been conditioned to work with staff to mitigate the parking issues. And the applicant will implement the alternative parking plan. Staff recommends that the planning commission find and determine that this project is categorically exempt. Approved mod 1341, subject to the conditions as stated in the attached resolution. And adopt resolution 194-2021, which incorporates the planning commission's findings and actions regarding this matter. Uh, I can do my best to answer any questions you may have. I believe the applicant is in the audience as well.
Thank you, Mr. Velasco. Do any of the commissioners have any questions on this item?
Vince, I just had a curiosity because you mentioned 1955. Have the minimum requirements changed since 1955? Because cars were a lot bigger then than they are now?
Uh, I have.
I know you weren't around in 55, so you may not know that.
That is a true statement. I was not alive in 1965.
I was just curious because of the little parking spots they have now, I was wondering if they were wider.
I want to say they haven't changed in size, uh, but I would have to refer to the old zoning code. I I know it was changed in the 60s. I just don't remember what year.
Okay.
Yeah.
Curiosity, that's all.
Uh, Bill, this is Ken Arnold. Uh, and I was alive in 55. And car spaces were nine by 20 at that time.
Oh, and what are they today?
So the industrial zone allows three and a half by 19. Uh, o- other areas in the city do allow for nine by 20.
Okay, thanks, Ken.
Not a problem.
Fun fact.
I have a question uh regarding uh on the loading zone, uh loading area. Is there a condition in the conditions of approval that uh will not allow queuing on the street?
Uh, yes, I believe there is a condition to state as such.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions from the commissioners? Okay, no questions. I would like to call upon the applicant if they wish to speak to please approach the podium at this time. Please state your name and city of residence for the record and address the planning commission. Please note there's a three minute time limit.
Yeah, this is Scott Murray. Um, currently live in Westminster, California. Um, we were just here to answer any questions that you guys, concerns you may have. Um.
Okay.
I'll make it easy. I don't have any questions.
Yeah, no questions.
Right, thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone from the audience wishing to speak on this matter? Seeing no one wishing to speak, I would like to close the hearing. Is there a motion in a second or the continuing?
Commissioner Rounds would like to move.
Okay, move by.
A second?
Go ahead, give it a.
Okay, so a motion by Commissioner Rounds and a second by Chair Arnold. Roll call vote, please? Aye.
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 I assume that's me, yes. I couldn't hear you, Teresa.
Sorry about that.
Okay.
Thank you.
Commission's action on this item shall become effective 14 days after receipt by the applicant of written notice of the commission's action. The applicant and or any other interested party may file an appeal of the commission's action to the city council. The appeal must be in writing and filed with the city clerk within the previously mentioned 14 day period.
Thank you. So ordered. Moving on to item number 12, new business. A request for a modification of property development standard to temporarily allow the purpose seven foot tall fence to enroate. Enquote, I mean, in the required 20 foot side yard setback on the subject property at 90, 9630 Norwalk Boulevard. Within the M2 heavy manufacturing zone, McMaster Car Supply Company. I would like to call upon Planning Intern Michael Dalguddio to please present item number 12.
Hi, hello, uh, Michael Dalguddio. Oh, thank you. Um, evening, uh, commissioners. Uh, I'm here to present a modification permit 1345. Uh, next slide, please. Oh, uh, thank you. Uh, the applicant is uh McMaster Car Supply Company. Location is 9630 Norwalk Boulevard within the M2 heavy manufacturing zone. Um, a little bit of background, um, the subject property is comprised of a single parcel measuring approximately 31.68 acres. Um, all the adjacent properties are also zoned M2. Uh, the subject property is currently developed as a large industrial building and an office area totaling approximately 670. Sorry, 670,000 square feet and it is currently occupied by McMaster Car Supply Company. Um, for the modification request, um, I have two relevant code sections. Um, pursuant to section 155.255 of the zoning ordinance, in the M2 zone. Fences, hedges and walls shall be permitted except in the required side yard when adjoining a dedicated street. The height shall not exceed three and one half feet. Additionally, pursuant to section 155.249 of the zoning codes pertaining to side yards in M2 zones. None are required except when adjoining a local street in which a side yard no less than 20 feet shall be required. As a part of an effort to enhance security at the subject property, the applicant is proposing to install a seven foot tall. Uh, galvanized steel. the applicant is proposing to install a seven-foot-tall galvanized steel fence along the edge of an employee and gathering space. A portion of this fence encroaches into the required side yard setback along Pacific Street, which is the subject of this modification permit. Apology. Here is the site plan that was provided by the applicant. In addition to the fence, they are also proposing modifications to interior cafe space, cafe interior, and remodeling of the exterior gathering space. However, that is not the subject of this modification. I understand that the site plan can be a little hard to read as it's small, so I actually enlarged it to highlight the location of the fence. As you can note, the purple line indicates a property line. The blue line indicates the line where the twenty-foot setback line is. And the red bracket indicates the location of the proposed seven-foot-tall fence within a said side yard setback. And here are elevations for the seven-foot-tall fence, which would go in front of the employee, Eden, and gathering area. And I also included an example image of the fence. As you can see, it is, has a contemporary aesthetic to it, which would greatly complement the additions that the applicant is proposing, not in this modification permit, but in the other project. And here I chose to show the existing conditions. This is a view from Pacific Street, which would be the frontage where the seven-foot-tall fence will be. The proposed fence will be built around existing trees and will not require elimination of any trees. And as you can see in the image itself, the topography of the setback area is uneven. And commissioners, for your consideration tonight, the subject property has an outdoor eating and gathering area along Pacific Street, which is not currently fenced in. Due to the topography of the setback area, a fence that complies with the city's zoning ordinance of three feet and six inches presents a security risk because the area in front of the fence is on a slightly higher elevation, proving, providing an easy access point for trespassers. In addition, there were a number of security incidences of the subject property in the past, including three facility break-ins and harassment of employees in the non-fenced-in eating area. Additionally, the seven-foot-tall high-security fence would protect employees from the risk of traffic-related incidences as well as reduce the potential for other safety-related incidences. The portion of the fence which encroaches into the side yard setback is only a small segment relative to the entire frontage along Pacific Street and is mainly visible from the McMaster Car facility and by employees who are entering and exiting the parking facility, parking areas, sorry. Pertaining to CEQA, pursuant to section one-five-three-zero-five, Class Five of the California Environmental Quality Act, issuance of minor encroachment permits, which does not result in changes in land use or density, shall be exempt from CEQA. The proposed project involves temporary allowing a portion of the proposed seven-foot-tall fence to encroach in the required twenty-foot side yard setback. Here is the notice to adjacent property owners. There were ten that were noticed. On September first, they were mailed to all adjacent property owners. On September ninth, it was posted on the Santa Fe Springs City Hall, the city library, and the town center's kiosk. And no comments and or inquiries were received as of this presentation. And our recommendations find and determine that the project is contemporarily, sorry, categorically exempt, approve modification case one-three-four-five, and adopt resolution one-nine-eight, the twenty-twenty-one, subject to conditions attached to the resolution. And I am here to answer any questions pertaining to the project as well as to representatives from McMaster Car.
Great, thank you. Do any of the commissioners have any questions on this item?
Yes, this is Chair Arnold. I'm still kind of unclear where the fence is going to be located. Can you go back to your slide that shows where the fence is going to actually be? I'm looking at the site plan, and I don't actually see where it's going to be located.
Certainly, permit me one moment while I- The one with the site plan with the picture in picture? Yeah. So the fence itself is going to be located along Pacific Avenue. On the site plan, it is there-
Excuse me, oh, there you go. All I could see was you, there, looks like the technology, okay, so they have it up now.
Yes, the location of the fence itself is going to be highlighted by the red bracket on the enlarged site plan. The frontage would be Pacific Avenue and located within the setback of the side yard for McMaster Car.
Is it going, is it going to follow that, that undulating kind of thing? Is it going to be straight like the bracket?
No, I apologize for the, for the imagery of the bracket. No, it's going to be following the, the undulation as you stated.
Okay, so how, how close is it going to be to the property line when it gets to its closest point to the property line? So it looks like it's only going to be maybe a foot or two away from the property line?
Yeah, about, above, but not from the property line.
Okay, so it's supposed to be twenty feet setback, right?
Yes, that's correct, twenty-foot setback, yes.
Okay. All right, thank you. That's all.
Excuse me, so what you're saying is it could be two and a half feet, but it's like one foot? Seven.
I can't hear what the other person is saying, sorry.
Okay, um, yes, I'll bring her to the podium. Okay.
So the, the code allows for up to forty-two inches in terms of a fence within the setback area. The request before you tonight is essentially to have a fence at seven feet high, more for the, the security purposes. And so the undulating is more or less to, to help preserve the trees that are in place. If you notice from the photos from Pacific Street, there's quite a number of trees. And so McMaster Car is trying to preserve as many trees as possible with this project, and that, that's why it's curving.
Okay, then, you know, one other question I'm, I'm having is if you look at the elevations, the north elevation, it looks like the fence is sitting on top of retaining wall that looks like it's about maybe, you know, forty-two inches to four feet high. It looks like almost the same height as the dock of the, the building. So it's going to have a seven-foot-high fence on top of a forty-two-inch-high or four-foot-high retaining wall, is that, is that correct or no? There's a four, I'm looking at the north elevation. See, at the bottom of the fence, it looks like the contour of the land drops down towards the driveway, and then there's like a retaining wall there. Is that, is that true or no?
The bottom left corner.
Yes.
Yeah. So it looks like the topography of the street goes down. So most of the fence is up on one, one constant level.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, look at the street view. There you go.
Apology.
Well, there'll, there'll be a buildup right there, so everything is level at the same point.
So what is the height, what's the height of the fence then at that point? It's going to be seven feet plus the height of the retaining wall.
The retaining wall should be underneath.
The retaining wall is underneath, but it's-
It should-
Getting out of the ground.
Chair Arnold, it, it should not make a difference as far as the height all the way across from one point to the next. It'll compensate if, if they need to go underneath to ascertain the, the retaining wall, the foundation or whatever, that's what'll be done. But as far as anything protruding, I, I don't think so. Isn't a period with the-
I'm looking at the north elevation, and I can see it where it says, it shows a stippled area, which normally in architecture is a concrete wall. So I-
Ground, right, correct?
I believe McMaster Car is saying it could be a ramp, but at the end of the day, the request is, is for a seven-foot-high wall from the grade level, from the ground level. So if there's a change because of the topography, the, the, the measurement of the height and the start of the, the fence will be essentially at grade level.
So then what I'm, what my thoughts would be then would be that north elevation, that the top of the fence and the bottom of the fence would match the topography of the street. Because it's going to be almost, at that point, it's going to be the closest to the street. Looking at the, looking at the floor plan, that's the area that's going to be closest to the street, just about where it starts to curve down. So, okay, thank you.
Chairperson, it, it, it should be on the property, so it shouldn't even obstruct the street or nothing?
Oh, no, I, I know that, I know that.
Yeah, so there should be no problem.
Yeah, and I think here that the, the whole idea is, as you mentioned, it's security. It was, this wasn't something they wanted to do, this has come out of a need. And, and, no, Ken, yeah, I, I know what you're saying about the height. But that could be the same set as you go back with the building. You know, it's higher up, the land, the ground is higher, like Johnny was saying, Commissioner Hernandez was saying. But the one thing that sells me on this, it's not a solid fence. It's a see-through fence. So you're not going to get, you're not going to get that blank fence looking. You're going to, you're still going to see people in there and everything's going on, so.
Right now, the, the eating area is, does not have any type of fencing around it. This is to provide security for that seating area. And I would add that the, the proposed fencing is simply for this portion of Pacific Street. It's, you know, unlike some of the other requests we've had in the past for the entire street frontage, this is simply for this eating area.
Okay, great, any other questions? Ken, did you have any other questions on that?
Oh, no.
Anyone else, any other commissioners?
Just one clarification, please. It states, and I believe Michael may have said it, and in the package, it states that it's a public hearing, but this is not a public hearing. It was not advertised in the newspaper. So that's just a, a misunderstanding. We simply notified as we do for modifications the adjacent property owners. So that's why you did not see a five-hundred-foot radius or any mention of publication in a newspaper. So there's no need to open and close the public hearing and go through those procedures.
Okay, great. That being said, could I get a motion and a second, please?
Commissioner Hernandez will second it.
Moved by Commissioner Carbajal and seconded by Commissioner Hernandez. Could I get a roll call vote, please?
Commissioner Carbajal? Commissioner Hernandez?
Aye.
Commissioner Rounds?
Aye.
Vice Chair Jimenez?
Aye.
Chairperson Arnold?
No.
Process four-one?
So ordered.
Commission's action on this item shall become effective fourteen days after receipt of the applicant of written notice of the commission's action. The applicant and/or any other-
Thank you. Thank you.
Always good to see people from McMaster Car. Thank you for what you're doing, all the jobs that you provide over there.
Thank you. Okay, moving on to item number thirteen, announcements. Are there any commissioners that have an announcement that they would like to share? Johnny?
No, just Chairperson Arnold, glad to hear from you. Glad you're, you're doing better.
Thank you, I, I'm feeling a lot better, thank you.
Good.
Commissioner Carbajal?
I, I can't hear.
You gotta push it on.
Sorry, Ken. I just was saying, I got started back on my old job again, back from furlough, so that's a good thing. And just, I'm happy that you were able to attend. Prayers are always with you. And right now, the score is seventeen to ten, so let's go.
Commissioner Rounds?
Ken, it's great to hear your voice. Can't wait until we can see you back here in person, but I know it's going to be a little while, but you keep, keep going, you're doing the right thing, and prayers to you and your wife.
Thank you so much, Bill, I appreciate that.
And Chair Arnold, did you have anything to announce?
Yeah, I just, I just want to say thank you for all your thoughts and your prayers, and, and I'm feeling a lot better than I was. I finished two rounds of chemo. I started another round on the twenty-seventh of September, and then I have the possibility of going to a total of six rounds. My oncologist is working on trying to get me into a clinical trial. This cancer that I have is pretty aggressive, and I, I feel probably about fifty percent better than what I was feeling when I first went into the hospital. So I'm being able to get around as, and I actually drove over to my house. My, my kids are remodeling the downstairs bathroom, so Cindy and I can move back into our house. I'm staying with my son Tim and, and La Mirada. I hate La Mirada. I want to be back in Santa Fe Springs. So thank you all for your thoughts and prayers, and, and I appreciate all the staff too for allowing me to, this is the first time they've done this, I guess, to have a combination Zoom and live meeting. So they went through a lot of work to get me in here, so I appreciate that too, thank you.
Thank you, and Ken, my prayers are with you and your family, and it felt really good to hear your voice. You shocked me when I heard you speaking, and I'm like, where's this voice coming from? But it made my day, and I'm happy to hear from you. And can't wait to throw the ball around with you again and maybe take a ride in your, in your Camaro sometime.
Yes, thanks a lot, appreciate that, Gabe.
You're welcome. Okay, so are there any announcements from the staff?
I would just like to echo the commissioners' well wishes to Ken Arnold and just to continue recovery, hopefully to full recovery.
Thank you.
House? Okay.
Oh, excuse me, I would just like to, just, I guess, say that I hope everything goes better with you, Ken, and obviously you're in a prayer. I tried stopping by to see you on Sunday, but your son felt that because of your condition, it probably wouldn't be best to have somebody visit, so he suggested Zoom. Except today, I can't even see you, so I'll have to- Except today, I can't even see you, so I'll have to follow up with a Zoom meeting, just to let you know.
Well, well, I, you know, it's not a pretty sight, so I, I'm starting to look like Fester. My, I lost all my hair, so, you know, I, I, I think I've lost about 30 pounds, which I should have lost about 80 pounds, but this is a heck of a diet to, to have to go through. But I am losing weight and that's actually the only good thing about having cancer.
Well, praise certainly are with you.
Thank you so much.
Okay, so that being said, I would like to adjourn this meeting at 7:56.
Okay, good night, everybody.
Again.
Good night, Ken.